This is a hybrid and in-person meeting of the Newington Fire Commission. And I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for all of our fallen brothers and sisters over the last month, please. Thank you.
Amen.
Okay, roll call. We'll get it, we'll get a piece of paper going around for the roll call. Approval of prior minutes from May 12, 2022, which was a Zoom meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 12.
Right? Second?
Yes, second.
Okay, that was approved. Public participation for the first time. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Anybody from the audience like to speak at this time? Okay, see enough, we'll move on. Communications.
Multiple reports. I have reports from Fire Chief Jeff Traumer on the activities of the fire department for the month of May. I also have Fire Marshal's Office, a monthly report from April. DJ Zorn. That's all the communications I have at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few additions. We also have an ongoing issue with the scheduling of some of our staff members. The town manager is trying to rectify it. He has asked for some communication from the commission regarding staff members from the Fire Marshal's Office holding roles. A secondary role is emergency management.
Okay.
So that is something that you guys will have to take up at another meeting. But he would like some sort of communication here of approving that or not. He's asking the commission if it's okay for members of the Fire Marshal's Office to hold a dual role.
Okay.
So that'll be your decision.
So would you like us to hold a special meeting?
That's your prerogative, but there is a meeting already scheduled for Monday.
Yep. Okay, that's good. Okay, good. Thank you. That's it? Okay. Commissioner Stoddard, on the ledger status.
They've done quite a job in spending all our money.
They have. I hope we have a few nickels.
There are over 100% and very few things that are under 100%. So we've done well.
We'll be finalizing our final budget transfers today. And our final purchase and requisitions will actually be by Monday at the latest and will pretty much be clean.
Okay. Good.
There's a couple bucks left over for physicals, but that's about it.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the ledger status as presented.
And I will second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. Old business. Radio system update.
So the radio system update, cross our fingers, it's in the final stages. We got a proposal from Paul Bootop. A motorola proposal that is now being looked at by consultant. I think it's called Blue Point Consultant, and it's actually working it over along with all the public safety agencies just to verify anything is correct or what needs to be changed. I believe the final headline on that to be signed is June 24th. I'm hoping we're gonna hit that mark because I think if we miss that mark, it's only gonna increase the price because of supply and demand right now. So I'm crossing my fingers. Everything's on point to go that way. But unfortunately, I haven't heard anything. I would think something would be brought up the next town council meeting. But I can't guarantee that. And I think there's only one town council meeting this month, so I don't know how that's gonna play.
So have you touched base with the town manager?
I was supposed to have a meeting with the town manager. I saw him the other day. He said, yep, we're still gonna set up with him, but I'll contact him tomorrow.
Yes, please.
And just follow up with that.
Yeah, we don't want that date to go by.
Yeah, no, I definitely don't want that date to go by because I think the price increase will last very costly to the town.
Yep. Okay, great, Jeff. Thank you. Anyone like to tackle the truck two update?
Truck two update, it's still on schedule for September delivery. We've been through Pierce Engineering and final questions have been offered yesterday. It's supposed to be on track.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Grant update.
So the grants, the last we heard that they were gonna start awarding them in the middle of June, middle to end of June. Unfortunately, I guess FEMA was having some problems with the FEMA system. And the last we heard was the middle to end of June. It was supposed to be in the middle of May. It got pushed out a month. So unfortunately, I'm not quite sure where they're gonna start. I haven't seen any yet. But that was the last meeting they had for the region. And the firehouse sub grant that we received, that equipment should hopefully be in, I would say within the next week or so.
Excellent.
So crossing our fingers on that. So we should be good to go with that.
That's great. And when that comes in, we're gonna do a...
Well, we gotta do a kind of promotional thing with firehouse subs. They want us to take pictures of the equipment and so forth. So yeah, once that come in, we'll set up with them and see how they wanna do that. Because I think right now there's no firehouse subs in the state of Connecticut. I think the closest one is in New York. So I don't know how they're gonna play that.
Okay, great. I'm not sure that this was supposed to be on here because I don't, I thought we took it off on the last month, but I'll read it anyway. Update on formal request for Company Three and Company Four expansion. But I believe we kinda left that ex nade because of the building committee that the town wants to form. So we're gonna let that happen and then then we'll pick that up again in September.
I know I talked to Keith and Keith wants to have a meeting with me to discuss facilities and some other things. I'm still waiting for him to set that meeting up, so hopefully everything will come into play and we can talk about that all at the same time.
All right, so can we take that off of old business for now, Chief?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. And presentation of proposed FMO FD fee schedule and possible action. I would say we're gonna be putting that, that should be on the new business. Well, we did talk about it last month, that's correct. But we'll lump the two of them together, the presentation of the proposed FMO FD fee schedule for possible action. And that would be you, Chief, and Fire Marshal, DJ, together?
I mean, if you want to start with that, DJ. So there are towns around us that obviously charge for services, both Fire Marshal Office and Fire Department. But what we've done is researched the surrounding towns. You guys have a report. Try to group it by, you know, similar square miles and similar population. The way it's broken down under sheets, it's basically the five towns around us that are task force towns. And then all of the towns that we could find fee schedules for. So based on what other towns are charging, we, I think we put together a reasonable fee schedule to offset costs associated with different activities. So there's a, you know, a $10 fee if you want a report. If you want a fire investigation, it would be a $200 fee. That includes photos and it's the whole investigation file. And so you'll see at the bottom, it's all, it's all what we're recommending to the commission to approve. Last thing is obviously a fee that's set by the state. There is a fireworks fee just to get the permit. That's to offset the time needed for my office to be out there. The biggest one is for food trucks to operate in town. I think that's gonna be the newest. But that way we can track that and we can do inspections to make sure that they're safe. There's an open burning permit. There's, and then there's fees for personal. So there's inspections. If somebody wants to do an after-hours inspection, there would be a fee for that. There is a fire watch fee. I know that's established already, but it's gonna be revised. And then if somebody wants a plant review fee, or I'm sorry, if they want a plant review expedited, they could pay. We would bring a staff member in specially to do the plant review. That covers kind of my office. The fire watch fee, we minute the fire department as well. So it's proposing an increase from Chief, I believe, at 25 an hour to 50 an hour?
Correct. So the average in the surrounding towns is anywhere from $43 to $75 right now. So we just kind of went in the middle at $50 an hour. Now, we're talking to Janet. She also, there would be fees included in that for, on top of that, which would include like workman's comp and the taxes that would have to come out of that. So that would all be incorporated into one.
Okay.
Now, I just wanna preface that these fees were brought up by the town manager who wanted to bring in some extra income for the Fire Department and Fire Marshal's Office. We were tasked with this project through him to look at these fees. Secondly, most of the fees that we have established here for, especially on the Fire Department side, are more towards the insurance companies. It's not the residents themselves. So we would actually be setting up a company that would actually go after the insurance companies, these homeowners, vehicle owners and so forth. I don't wanna think that we're taxing the taxpayers. We're going after the insurance companies to recoup money for the town.
I have to correct you on one thing. It's not to bring in income, it's to cover the cost.
To cover the cost of the operations of the department.
So Chief, also to make one thing clear, say if somebody has a light duty rescue or hazmat, you have a fee of $400. And they go after the insurance company. If it's not recouped from the insurance company due to one reason or another, the individual is not responsible for that fee or what happens then?
DJ, that's a, that's a decision of the commission.
Exactly.
You have the ability to set them to election basis, but some towns, just say, if you don't recoup a cost from the insurance company, drop it.
Okay, all right, good.
Sounds good.
I would, I would like, it's definitely great to bring some revenues into the town to help us offset our costs. The one thing that I would like to see in the proposed ordinance from us is that the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief have the right to suspend or exempt, waive any fees as they see fit.
Yeah, we both had discussed that as that would be part of the proposal that we pushed towards the town to say that we would have that right to be able to do that.
Right. You know, for whatever reason, an organization or whatever. All right, great.
Well, the exemption that we had discussed would probably have to be in writing for us to review versus just a verbal one.
Correct, correct.
You know, there would have to be some type of, you know, documentation.
Sure, sure.
So are we gonna act on this?
So I would like a, so we can move to discussion of possible action regarding the town ordinance for proposed Fire Marshal and Fire Department office permit fees. So I would like a motion from...
I'll move that we send a proposal to the town council based on the fee schedule that's been proposed to us.
And do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
And let's take a vote on that.
Aye.
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 Great. It's a mayor's decision and so you guys can take this to the town council and they can it can move along their chain and hopefully in September, October timeframe, we can get this going.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's great, great job between the two different department heads to come up with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, suppression and prevention.
Executive session has been canceled for this evening, so number ten.
Hold on, just a second. Just a break. So that was old business fees. I have another item under new business that I need you guys to approve or deny regarding the food trucks. So that would be a brand new ordinance that the town has to create.
For the food trucks specifically?
Correct.
And?
So the purpose behind that is enforcement action. My office and everybody that's appointed to my office has the ability to write a ticket. Same ticket you would get for speeding or whatever the case may be for the police department. In order to write that ticket, which again, we're not doing this as a revenue builder, but for enforcement purposes, there has to be a local ordinance in place requiring a permit to operate in this basic food truck. So we would like to proceed with drafting that ordinance. So if somebody doesn't register and get that permit, we can enforce.
Oh. And those powers are given to you by the town or by the state, the state Fire Marshal?
As far as the citation?
Yes.
That's through the state.
That's through the state. Okay.
But you have to have an ordinance to be able to do it through the state.
So with your provision, we would like to move forward drafting that.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Are you looking at me again?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Or Mr. Rob?
I'll move that, move the ordinance for food trucks forward.
And a second?
Second.
And we have a vote?
Aye.
Right?
All in favor, yes.
Aye. Okay, three, you have three.
Just under new business, I'd also like to bring up, I know it's not in there, but the, I did, we are going to meet with the rules and regulations just to review them and go over them. I know it's not in either old business and new business, but I wanna have that put in there just so that we can correct that. So the committee has submitted, Chief Stegmar submitted it to me. I forwarded it to the commission and now we're just in the review stage of that, just so that the, everybody's aware of that. We're looking at that now.
Okay, and if a special meeting is needed, then absolutely we would go forward with that. Thank you. Okay, anything else from the floor for new business or everybody good?
Did anything under old business, did anything come about, about engine two, what Hermes was working on?
It's still, no.
That's, that's, that's better.
With your, with your permission, I'd like to pursue that more so that, you know, we can make a formal request for that.
You don't need our permission. You can do that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that you're okay with me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I will move forward with that request to the town manager and so forth.
Absolutely.
And Jack, just for my own benefit, is Company Five got heat and air conditioning now?
They have air conditioning and the heat is scheduled for next week.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Air conditioning's been working good on the last few hot days? Excellent.
Jack, one question regarding that. When, when that system is in full operation, that other unit that's in, in the wall, that's gonna be removed or is that gonna stay?
Yeah, it's the other, the AC unit is in full operation right now, but the cold volume will be removed.
Look at that, okay, okay.
Right. Chief, did you wanna bring up that new state legislation under new business added or you wanna do that during?
No, we can talk about it. So the state legislator approved fees to the town for sometimes they, they provided it $500 as a call if they responded to, I believe it was the fire engineering put out that Norway should know. But for the town of Newington, we have $550. The state legislator actually put in there that anytime we respond out there for any type of call, we would get $700 a call. And what that would, we would have to do is supply something to the fire administrator and then they would bring the fees back to the town. I don't know the exact how it's gonna work yet because it's going into effect July 1st and I'm sure that they were come out to show us I've done.
Yep.
But the fee was from the Weddysfield line all the way to the Meriden line on the Brolin Terre Playe. And we appreciate the legislators pushing that through to help us out.
And Jeff, when I read through the legislation last night, there is a one-time-a-year payment for $700.
So the only, the only wording that gets said in there is if the state mandated you for the fire protection in that specific area. So I'm not sure if that means that we would specifically get it. If we didn't respond once, we would still get that?
Right.
Again, I don't know the...
But it was saying that you get the 700 and you get the 700 per call on top.
Yeah, again, once the legislation comes out, we'll know a little bit more. It's kinda, I don't think it's 100% yet.
Right.
I just wanna, before I misspeak, I wanna be able to say it ready.
Well, it's another good thing to generate some revenues for the department, so.
Movement is not, I'm aware of.
I think it is also because nine, we didn't think 91, but 91 is also on there.
Yeah, again, there was certain, there were certain highways that were and it was certain highways that were.
Right.
And it was only for volunteer departments, not for paid networks.
Correct. Yeah, so we'll look into it and see what we can get. Great.
Another way to recoup costs.
Absolutely, always helps. Moving on to public participation for the last time. Anybody from the audience like to speak about anything?
Just wanna bring up a couple things that the department's done over the last month. Public Safety Day was a huge hit, I believe, for the department. We had close to 50, 60 guys there. We just showcased the department in a sick way. I can't thank the department enough for what they did. I thought it was a huge undertaking by Chief Stegmar, Chief Regina, and everybody that was involved in it. They did a great job. The extrication went very well. Kind of showcased how the public safety agency worked together. So hats off to everybody that was involved with that. They did a great job. The reservoir road structure part that we had, when they pulled up on that, it made a lot of fire and they did just a great, great job and the stop. So hats off to them on that one also. The department's been busy in general and I can't thank everybody enough for what they're doing. And the Memorial Day parade, you know, Jack did a great job with that and setting everything up. And we participated in the Memorial Day ceremonies and our cadets shined tremendously there for the honor guard for the that ceremony over there. It was very well done. And the cookout here that was done by you, Commissioner Waylon, great job.
Thank you.
So I believe at one point we had posted 250, 300 people here and it was a good showing. So hats off to everybody.
It was funny because the people that were helping me cook says, hey, Bubbs, you got a lot of hamburgers here, but they went really quick. There was a hungry crowd when they came back, that's for sure. More than happy to do it for them and we've been doing that for years for them and it's just a great feeling for when they come back here and break bread in our, our house, so.
And just a couple things that are going on in the department also. Chief Regina right now is working on the new Alpine software that we're gonna be transitioning to July 1st, hopefully. Maybe pushed off a month just because of some issues that we're running into just with getting the information back and forth. But that's on track. The tablets are ordered. They're on track to the replacement of the apparatus. So a lot of work's going on right now and I can't thank all the chiefs for what they're doing and everybody that's involved.
Great.
Just to put the Public Safety Day in perspective, they also had a health thing up at Walmart. I talked to some of the people that were there. They had 12 people for the whole day.
It was, it was very nice to see everybody show up to the public sector day. I bet you we probably had, what do you think, 500, 600 people? In and out most of the day.
Oh, yeah.
So it was nice. I mean, it's our first year. There's already talk about doing it again next year, so we're looking forward to it.
I know I was pleasantly, pleasantly surprised when I walked up to see Life Star and found that was an old, good friend of mine from years back that was a firefighter in West Darford and Farmington. That was the pilot of Life Star. We caught up after many, many years and it was great to see him also. So great job by you guys. Thank you. You all did a great job and I know it wasn't a one-person thing and it was a department thing. So thank you, thank you very much. We shine to the public.
And then just one last thing. We recently represented a, we asked Paul Walls to paint us a painting of the old firehouse with the three buffaloes in front of it. And I can't say enough of this picture. It's phenomenal. It's, it's actually hanging upstairs and it's such a great look in our, in our hallway upstairs. And I, I mean, he did an unbelievable job, so hopefully people will come by and take a look at it.
And for anybody from the public that would like to possibly get a print, maybe we can put on our Fire Department website the link to, so they could order it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll put a link up on the department's website. If anyone wants it, they can order right directly through the company. It's a beautiful picture. He's a talented individual, that's for sure. Anybody else? Public participation?
Just one thing we'll have to discuss after the meeting, but you guys had approved internship for my office?
Yes.
We have two applicants.
Excellent.
So I just wanna know how you wanna proceed with that.
Okay, well, that's great.
Interview and make a decision.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else? Chiefs? Good. Retired Chief Traumer. Great to see father and son sitting out there.
I just...
Three generations.
Yeah.
I like to sit back here and see what's going on and mingling between the Fire Marshal's Office and the Fire Chief's Office. I take my hat off to both of them.
Progress.
Never been so good.
All right.
As far as I can see.
Couldn't have said it, you couldn't have said it any better, Chief.
Talk together. That's the way it should be. There's always one department and another department. Don't infringe on my department. What I see here is just amazing. The department itself, I don't know how this department is going like it does. It just shines. Oh my God, the turnout of the people, the fires. Amazing.
My apologies.
And I'm not trying to blow smoke screens because of my son. It's just the department. First class. Keep it up.
I'd put this department up against anybody.
He's done a good job, but I think the commission has to take a little bit of the credit. He's done a good job, but I think the commission has to take a little bit of the credit for putting him there.
Not really.
Make sure she's watching her phone, would you?
Um I I'd just like to comment on past Chief Chommer's comments that um we do, that that this place just shines, the camaraderie, the 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 family, I always stress family uh in our house, and um it is, it's one big family and you know, like every family, we have our little dips and bops here and there, but uh for the most part, this place is just uh unbelievable, the guys get along, the command staff is second to none. And uh it it comes from the top and goes to the bottom, and for that, I thank all the command staff, all the officers, and all the individuals that participate in this department.
Right down to the youngest for that.
Right down to the fourteen year old that just signed up yesterday. Thank you, thank you very much, and it's not only people in the department that say, I I was shocked to see what a woman videoed the fire on Reservoir Road and she was pre-arrival and had the trucks pulling up and the comments were just, oh my God, thank God for our fire department and look how great those guys worked together. Uh it was just the best feeling to see that, so thank you.
Is that Commissioner's remarks?
No, anybody else?
You betcha.
Now, we're going to Commissioner Marks?
Yeah.
We're we're gonna close public participation?
Yes, we are.
No, any hands just before we do that? Okay, now we can go to Commissioners' remarks, Commissioner DeMaile.
Thank you. Um. Talk about this department, I um arrived for Public Safety Day at about quarter after nine, and from about that time period until well after ten thirty, Deputy Chief Niswada spent all of his time working on that generator from Weathersfield, and he finally got it up and running. So I'm gonna say to you, you should tell our neighbors to the east that they owe you a debt of gratitude for all the hard work you put in and I, you know, and I got to witness exactly, you know, what was going on during the entire time that I was there. So my hats off to you for uh spending the time to get that thing up and running and uh I'm assuming that it's working just perfect. So. And uh Chief.
Switch, switch your.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that was the other thing, I'm not gonna, yeah, I'm I'm not gonna really say that because I know that he kept getting in and out of different uniforms, so. Anyway, um Chief, your command staff just totally amazes me. While I was there, each one of the deputy chiefs um did a fantastic job. The cadets, amazing, from uh, you know, from the beginning to the end of this, so my hats off to all of the command staff for running their respective areas the way that they do. And the cooperation between police, fire, and EMS was outstanding, so my hats off to uh everybody, the other, the only other two things that I wanna uh talk about is, um I understand we have two firefighters that um successfully tested and certified in the department, uh Sal Garofalo certified as Health and Safety Officer and Austin Ruer successfully tested and certified as aerial operator, so my hats off to those two individuals as well. And that's it from me.
Yeah, we've had many firefighters just here, we're, we've had many firefighters over the last, you know, six months that have went through different courses and have successfully completed their, uh in fact, three or four officers just finished enrollment, they just did tests. They just uh tested for Fire Officer One.
We haven't got the results yet, at least.
They should have the results hopefully next week or the week after, but uh yeah, so a lot of guys are actually stepping up and getting their certifications and hats off to all of them.
Well, please let, you know, please let our commission know so that they can be recognized properly, perfect.
Yeah, they're in the report.
Okay.
Whenever they come, whenever we get the results.
Got it.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm good, I'm good.
Commissioner Statter?
I'll echo all of those comments from both of you so far, uh but one of the things I wanna point out, I had a brief meeting with the town manager a couple of weeks ago and he was expressing his concern for dirt, certain things, you know, what happens if this guy leaves or what happens if that guy leaves? And it gave me a lot of pleasure to tell him that we've got people in the wings that are waiting to take those positions and we really do have a a good group of I don't wanna call them underlings, but people coming up that have abilities that will be able to do just exactly what we're doing now and and not lose a step, so I I'm very very proud of how we're positioned within the department and the town and we and the region, so. Congratulations to everybody. Job's well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Statter. Um I'll just make it short and sweet, thank you for everything that you guys do for us. Um I'll echo the other two commissioners' remarks. And um in closing, I'd like to say that um this is our, our, we will not be meeting in the summer for July and August, we're gonna take a little break. And uh but if a special meeting is required by anybody, please let us know and we'll get one scheduled. And um I hope you have a great, safe summer, you know what they say in the summer, drink plenty of water, stay hydrated, so. Uh with those remarks, so uh ask for a motion or adjourn.
To adjourn.
A second, Ed.
My own favor.
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much.